I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Motion to approve the regular agenda.
I'd like to add something to the agenda.
Sure, go ahead.
I would like to add this, and have it for discussion. You've been served.
You can hand that right down to the attorney and the mayor. Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Thank you very much. Can I get a second? Excellent. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed.
Opposed.
Do we have two nays down here, gentlemen? Excellent. Okay. And looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed.
Aye. I am opposed.
You are opposed to our consent agenda. Thank you very much. All right. We're going to move right into staff agenda items. City engineer Brad Reeceack. Brad, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight we have on the agenda a contract for roadway contractor services with K E J Enterprises. They've provided these services for the last two years for the City of Grant, services that would include snow removal, mowing, brush clearing, trash pickup, basically doing some roadway management and coordinating some dust control. So the contract, the hours provided in the contract or the hourly rates are the exact same rates as we have had for the last two years. So the contract seems to be in order and staff would recommend to council that we authorize a contract with K E G Enterprises and Company for the roadway contractor services.
And I note, just very quickly, Tom, if you won't mind, we do have some insurance obligations for the contractor to hold, obviously, as an independent contractor. We're asking him to do that. And we also maintain our termination clause, which is upon 30 days' notice from either party, the contract can be terminated. Obviously, K E J up to this point has been an excellent resource for Grant. I will give some kudos to Steve Bonin, our former road commissioner, who brought on this local contractor. And boy, I tell you, it was a good thing. I'm glad that we did it. He's been excellent. Tom, you were first. Do you have some questions on this?
Yeah, I don't have the other contract. This is the old contract, correct?
Yes.
I don't have the old contract.
It's exactly the same.
Is it? Okay, I don't remember that if the annual snowfall exceeds seven inches, which, why would I remember that? But it was in the old contract? Okay, so that didn't change. Pricing stayed the same?
Stayed the same.
Everything's exactly the same?
It is.
Okay. I just want to get that, make sure I understood that. Thank you. Larry.
Brad, I see Kenny Johnson's not here this evening. I'm going to ask this question of our city attorney, Mr. Sandver over here. We are entering into a $108,000 per year contract. Mr. Johnson's not here to ask, is he subcontracting his work? Has he provided certificates of insurance for every contractor, holding, you know, and put them in with the city? You know, name them as a additional insured. You're well aware of how that works, I'm sure. Because he is contracting, he is subcontracting. If this exceeds $100,000 per year, why are we not going out for a request for proposal? We thought when we got Kenny Johnson, it was great because we went out for a request for proposal when we had Miller and found a better deal. Why is their city not going out for a request for proposal, see if there's another good deal out there? And state statute says any work contracted in excess of $100,000 required a request for proposal. Mr. Sandver, maybe you can tell me, is that, did you review that statute to see if we have to go out for a request for proposal? Are you aware of it?
Am I aware of the statute?
Yes.
I am aware of the statute. And by the way, my name is Mr. Sandstrom.
Sandstrom.
And this is a contractor that the city has worked with for many years, and it's really just an extension of the previous contract, so I don't believe it needs to be.
It's an extension, but he is still contracting and he is still subcontracting. So, in essence, he is contracting, and when you have contracts that exceed $100,000, I know you've given legal advice in the past. In fact, the grant restoration asked if they could put a...
Okay, what does that have to do with a contractor?
I'm going to question...
Okay. We're talking about a road contractor, Larry.
When I talk about youth...
Stay on the subject.
Youth scholarships. Edgar Lambert says that they are not allowed to put youth scholarships on a city website. When indeed, they represent...
I'm going to go ahead. Yeah, Mr. Carr.
I do not believe that.
Mr. Lanu.
I would like another opinion, is what I'm saying. We've been given bad opinion.
Thank you so much. Mr. Carr, you're next.
I thought we were here to talk about getting extending the road contract, so I'd like to get back to that. Yeah, I mean, Kenny's done a good job for us.
Require RP.
I don't really care what you think, Mr. Lanu. Because what the attorney said is that we don't have to go out for bids. I don't care about websites or anything. I think Kenny's done a good job. I think you do a disservice to him by sitting here harping about stuff that has absolutely no business being talked about at this time. So with that being said, I'd make a motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor of approving the independent contract agreement with K E G Enterprises, our current provider, please say aye.
Aye.
And nay. Or no.
Abstain.
Abstain. Is there a reason for your abstention, sir?
Do you believe he's got to go?
Do you not want to tell us your reason for your abstention?
Well, I haven't had a chance to review the last contract.
You haven't read the contracts? Okay, very good. And I also vote aye. Okay. That passes. Let's move on. Congratulations, Ken Johnson. Nice job. Keep up the good work. Flipping the page over, we are going right into city planner Jennifer Haskamp, and she has quite a bit for us tonight. So Jennifer, I'm going to let you launch right into that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This evening, the first agenda item and only agenda item is actually the Farms of Grant preliminary plat application. There is quite a bit of information in your packet this evening, so I'm going to do my best to actually just summarize the content and then open it up for questions from you with respect to the materials that were provided. So this evening, just to give everybody a sense of the presentation and what you'll be hearing, for those that are in the audience and watching at home, I'll give you just a brief project summary of the request. I'll also summarize what happened at the public hearing. The public hearing was held at the regular March meeting, and we did receive several comments from the public. And you'll see that in my summary, I've provided some responses to some of that public comment. Based on the information that was at the March meeting, there was some additional information that was requested by the planning commission, also in response to some of those public comments. And then staff had some comments as well that were in the initial staff report. Based on that, the applicant came back to us at our regular April meeting and discussed it again, at which time the planning commission reviewed it, so I'll summarize that. Additional information, which included things such as access and traffic analysis, some minor revisions to the site plan and preliminary plat. They also indicated a phasing plan for us, and then also a screening plan. Finally, I'll talk a little bit about the engineering and other agencies that have jurisdiction over the project as well. And then also, I've prepared a draft resolution for you this evening with some preliminary draft conditions, as recommended by the planning commission to you this evening. So just a little bit with respect to the existing site conditions. The property is located at 11253 and 1160175th Street North. For those of you familiar with the historic farms, it's the Carlson Farm and the Masterman Farm. The property is approximately 318 acres. There's western frontage on the property on Lake Elmo Avenue, which is also known as County Road 17. There's northern frontage on 75th Street North, which is Cassat 12. The applicant has prepared a wetland delineation. During that process, they identified 15 wetlands that are clustered primarily on the southern half of the project, and they total approximately 12.68 acres. The existing vegetation on the property includes croplands, grasslands, and some intermittent woodlands. The topography is sort of rolling and undulating on the south half of the project. So based on that, you can see from this existing site conditions graphic, the topo and also those yellow boundaries identify where the wetlands were delineated. The wetland delineation was completed actually just before winter set in, so the delineation itself has not gone through the formal whacker review process. The applicant is aware of that and will be doing that. So part of the conditions this evening that you'll see before you include getting approval of that wetland delineation, and then also preparing any mitigation plans that are necessary as a result of the project. In terms of the project itself, the applicant identified some preliminary project objectives that were identified in your narrative this evening. I thought I would just summarize those for those that are in the audience. One of the things that they were really interested in doing is making sure that they followed the comprehensive plan and our ordinances. So before you this evening, the applicant is not requesting any variances with respect to the project. So essentially, that means it's a conforming subdivision, and it meets the ordinances for lot size, lot area, density, and all of those standards. Their goal was to create a rural residential neighborhood. You'll see when we get to the site plan in just a moment, actually, that there are two fairly large parcels that would be lots within the subdivision, and then the majority, or 29 of those lots, kind of fall into that rural residential character size. Those large parcels that are on the northern half of the project, the intent at this time is that those would allow for the continuation of agricultural uses. They would be, there's an existing homestead on one. One is not homesteaded currently. That property would allow a home to be constructed, but that the idea is that there would be a right to continue the agricultural production on those two parcels. The applicant is proposing 31 lots, as I indicated, the one large existing farmstead, and I think I actually might have this reversed, but there's a 53-acre parcel, and then there's a 75-acre parcel as well. Then there are 29 rural residential lots that range in size between approximately five acres and 7.31 acres. For those of you that are interested, our minimum lot size in this zoning designation is five acres. So all of the lots are meeting that minimum threshold. In terms of how the project will be managed long-term, the applicant is proposing a homeowners' association. The homeowners' association would include the 29 rural residential lots, so all of those lots that are between the 5 and 7.31 acres. Those lots would then be subject to covenants and architectural standards. The two large lots would be excluded from the homeowners' association. As I stated, the applicant is proposing initially to phase the project. You'll see in the phasing plan, it's approximately 10 lots per phase, with the first phase being located off Lake Elmo Avenue on the western edge of the project. There's a new road that would be constructed to serve the project on your plans this evening that's identified as Street A. The 29 rural residential lots and one of the large lots would use that roadway. The existing homestead or farmstead would continue to use its driveway, which is located off of 12 currently, and would not connect into the new street. Due to the size of the property and even the smaller rural residential lots, everything's being proposed to be custom graded and custom construction. So as a result, you'll see in your packets this evening and in the plan set, that it's a conceptual building plan, essentially. It's a conceptual building envelope that's standardized across all of the lots to demonstrate that the lots are buildable and that there's adequate area to site the home and the driveway, meet the setbacks, and allow for the primary and secondary septic site. But obviously, they don't translate into actual building footprints. They're conceptual. So just real quickly, here's the overall site plan of the project. You can see based on this where the new roadway is. Let's see here. I think my cursor's going to work. So we're off of Lake Elmo Avenue here on the west. The road meanders through the project and then comes out on this northeastern edge off of 75th Street North. And I just went backwards. So you can see from this that these two front-end pieces, those are the large parcels that would be associated with the project, and the others are the remaining rural residential lots that are on the southern half of the project. As I stated, we did have a public hearing. We had several comments. That public hearing transcript is obviously available to you to take a look at. Staff tried our best to just summarize and categorize some of those public comments and provide a response to them, so that folks knew that we were trying to be responsive to their concerns. One of the key, so this bullet is essentially some of those key issues that came up. One of those being safety and access of the location of where those, that new drive would hook up to both Lake Elmo Avenue and Cassat 12. In response to that, and then also in response to Washington County's comments, the applicant has prepared a traffic analysis that was conducted by SPAC Consulting. That was in your packets this evening. It has been updated since the planning commission meeting. There was a reference in there to being, the analysis was originally done with 29 lots, and it's been updated to the 30. There was some concern about construction traffic, particularly construction traffic coming out on 17. So you'll see in your draft conditions this evening that there's a condition related to that. Again, there was concern regarding lot size and density, the perception that there was some sort of variance associated with the project. That is not, in fact, the case. All of the lots do meet our minimum lot sizes. And then there were general questions about the permanent protection of those two large agricultural pieces and making sure that those remained in perpetuity. It cannot be further subdivided. So you'll see this evening that there's some conditions that are identified with respect to restrictive covenants, also placing some information within the development agreement and then also within the HOA documents. There were obviously concerns about screening with respect to the new roadway and adjacent neighbors. There's a screening plan that was provided and is in your packets this evening. Concern regarding the septic sites, those are referenced as well in your packets this evening. And then just general comments and concerns regarding surface and stormwater management, wetland impacts, et cetera. It should be noted that there are a couple of different agencies that get involved in that, not just the city, and the city's engineer performs the review. But then also, the Browns Creek Watershed District has its own requirements, and they are obligated to fire those, follow those regulations as well. In terms of the access and traffic analysis, I won't go into this too much because this is in your packets this evening, but you'll see that the consultant who prepared the study essentially studied how much traffic would be generated out of the project, and then estimated how much traffic would then come out of each access point throughout the day. In order to do that, they also looked at the site distance and access spacing guidelines, which are things that Washington County looks at when they issue access permits, and provided that analysis. And then their consultant provided some recommended improvements based on the information that they collected. That was in response to Washington County's letter, which is also in your packets this evening. The conclusions from the applicant's consultant were essentially that there's some minor issues out there, but for the most part, it was their belief that the two access points were safe. They met the site distance, had adequate visibility to make both left and right-hand turn, turns out of the new street onto both Cassat 12 and County Road 17. They did provide some recommended improvements on County Road 17. They identified providing a right-turn lane for northbound traffic on Street A. And in response to that, the county did preliminary, preliminarily take a look at it. They actually are looking for a right-turn lane and a dedicated left-turn lane. However, the applicant did meet with the county last week, had some good discussion, and exactly what Washington County is going to require with respect to the access locations is still up for debate in terms of what can be constructed and what would be safe based on the traffic that is generated from the project. Cassat 12, you'll see again that it meets the access spacing guidelines. The conclusion was that the site distance was adequate. There were some recommended improvements with respect to expanding the shoulder for eastbound traffic as opposed to a full right-turn lane. The county has preliminarily stated that they would like to see a full right-hand turn lane into the project, and they are also discussing whether or not a left-turn lane would be warranted there as well. Again, the applicant's talking with the county. It's the county's jurisdiction with respect to the access locations, and what improvements would be required. So you'll see that's addressed appropriately within the conditions this evening. This graphic identifies just some of the minor updates that were conducted between the first planning commission meeting and the second planning commission meeting. You'll see that they're very minor in terms of some of the reconfigurations that were required based on comments of the public, but then also meeting our ordinances. So these areas are just the changes essentially that occurred between the first plan set and the second plan set. This graphic identifies the phasing plan, so you'll see again, Phase 1 abuts Lake Elmo Avenue, and that is where the primary access would be into the project. And there's approximately 10 lots in each phase. In terms of screening, there are some questions with respect to screening on both the west and the eastern side of the project. This graphic identifies where those primary concerns were. It's a little bit hard to see, but there's some red hashed lines that outline both the western and the eastern connection points. That's where the neighbors had the most concern. In response to that concern voiced at the public hearing, the applicant has provided some additional screening. They're proposing Black Hill Spruce, which you can see on this plan. There are three trees that are being proposed to sort of fill in the gap, if you will, on the western edge of the project. I believe it's 10 trees that are identified on the eastern part of essentially Street A. Again, to fill in the gap. For those of you who went out to the site, both properties, adjacent properties, have actually started to screen in their properties. So the trees are essentially a fill-in-the-gap measure, for lack of a better way of saying it. Engineering and utilities, Brad, our city engineer did review the plat. He included some comments, which are in your attached to the staff report this evening. The road was designed to rural section standards, so it's a standard paved surface with shoulders and ditch section. The full stormwater report was submitted for review by our engineer. It should be noted that the applicant is going through the Browns Creek Watershed District process right now and is working to resolve some of the issues associated with their requirements. Once that's done and the full calculations are completed, essentially, they'll be requested and required to provide the updated stormwater calculations for review by Brad once again to make sure that they comply with our standards. And that's a condition in your draft resolution this evening. The wetland delineation, I've already referenced that. It is good for five years, so once that delineation is approved, that's the duration of that period. It's ready for submittals, so I would assume that we'll be going through that process very, very soon. Septic, there's a primary and a secondary septic system that were, or drain field that were identified on each lot, which is identified in your packets this evening. In terms of other agency comments, again, Washington County has jurisdiction over the access permits at both 12 and 17. They have reviewed the SPAC memo they met last week. They're going to meet again this week and try to hash out and resolve some more issues with respect to where those access locations are. Not necessarily the location, but what improvements would be associated with them. The septic tests, again, are something that are permitted through Washington County. The preliminary borings that were conducted are actually in the county's hands right now for review. Preliminarily, everything looks good in terms of a primary and a secondary on each lot. And again, the stormwater plan is being reviewed by Browns Creek Watershed District. So in your packets this evening, there's a draft resolution with conditions for consideration. I believe it's generally organized by topic. It's not exactly, but gives you kind of a sense of how or the order of operations in terms of the conditions that are identified within there. You'll see that there is the compliance with other agencies and permitting requirements are one set of conditions. There's wetland and stormwater regulations, conditions, septic systems, conditions related to the development agreement. There are several with respect to that, because obviously, that's sort of the next step. You'll see within the draft conditions that the development agreement, it would be a condition of final plat, that the applicant would need to enter into that with the city to make sure that the conditions are met, and some other miscellaneous items. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Carr. I have one question, Jennifer, and I should have asked you this before, but that one small property that's up along on 75th, I think it's Ms. C.'s property up there, I think. That's not owned by any of the, okay, either party? Okay.
Correct.
Because we have the contiguous lot ordinance. I just thought of that. No, that's a little under an acre or a little over an acre, so that would have...
Yes, that's an exception parcel.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Yep, that's what I thought. I just wanted to ask that question, so, thank you. Larry.
Jennifer, the plans provided, do they reflect the Washington County requirements for a right-of-way? Do these show them on there?
Members of the council, yes, it does. They have been updated and revised to show the additional 15 feet that were, that was requested by Washington County in their letter, which was attached. So, yes.
At this time, I'd like to come over to Kim over here. At the, I was at the planning commission meeting that you had. Following the planning commission...
Larry, why don't you wait to make comments till you come back here, so you have a microphone? Well, you have a microphone over here, Larry.
I'll come to a microphone if you'd like.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to serve our city clerk with a formal complaint for an open meeting violation following the planning commission meeting on this issue. The open meeting violation happened with our city planner, our city clerk, and four members of the...
Fantastic. Larry, that's fantastic. I appreciate the grandstanding. You're doing a fantastic job. Why don't you come on and sit down? You can hand that to the attorney.
I will file that to the city attorney. Because, Mr. Huber, you said that all council people will be treated equally and fairly.
Having a meeting. Having a meeting. Hand it to the attorney. Let's get her down. Are we ready? Let's keep moving forward. Thank you very much, Mr. Linu. Good question on the right-of-way. Mr. Carr, do you have another question? No, you can go.
I saw him first.
Okay, all right, okay, I'll go. I've been doing quite a few of these subdivisions over the years, and this is a very nice, clean subdivision. I really, it all came together really well, there aren't really any major issues. It's a beautiful piece of property. As I drove by it over the years, I always thought it would be a great place to put some houses. It is. And, you know, from putting my councilor member hat on up here, I also think that it's great for grant to get, you know, some more houses. We, you know, if we get up to a certain amount of people in grant, we get up to that 5,000 threshold, we get some gas tax money, we get some tax base that we can do some things with also. So I think that's really good. It also, with grant and the 10-acre density and all that that we have, I think it's important, and I believe we ought to honor what we said long ago and keep that for not only the residents who expect us to, I don't think anybody's ever run to split up grant into smaller lots, but also the fact that, you know, it just locks that corner of grant down for development. And we don't want any creep coming in, and we don't want any, you know, stillwater coming our way. Not, we like stillwater, but we like stillwater staying stillwater. So I think it's a great development. My only concern with all of this and from the residents who have spoken at the Planning Commission and what I've heard, is they're a little curious what's going to go on with the larger parcels. I think it's great that you guys have said, whoever's, I talked to the developer, he's, "Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Tom Carr, nice to see you." We, you know, I think the issue has come, those larger parcels, this is not a cluster development. This is development that's been done many times in grant, it's consistent. We don't ask for park fees in grant. One of the things we did with large landowners to not really have all this money coming in to put up parks and all that stuff. So I think it's really important for us to really work with people to try to do these developments in the landowners. Now, I seen David here, and he's had that property for a long time, and I think he should do what he wants with his property. That being said, those large properties that are there, I think if people understood that you want to do agriculture there, but there's nothing written, you can do whatever you want. I mean, you can, and you should be able to, in my opinion, with your, but if we're doing a development agreement and you're not going to be involved with the HOA part with all the other units, the 29 units that are going to be in there, I think from my standpoint, from a city standpoint, because it always seems to come back to us, if you said, you know, "We're not going to do these things," it's great to say you're going to do agriculture. What does that mean? You know, first thing, and I'm just going to say this because people say it every time, "Well, there could be a pig farm next to you." Well, no, that's not going to happen because land prices in grant are too expensive to do that, you're not going to do that. But there's nothing written. So, you know, and we have no reason, right, to ask for any, and I would not ask for anything as part of a condition for this development, but if you guys chose to put a few things that you won't do into the development agreement so that people that are buying the lots that are concerned what's going to happen there would know that these things can happen, there's a whole bunch of things that could in our ordinance, but these things can happen, I think it'd be a good idea. All I could do is ask. I think I brought up a couple of things, you know, there's things like that you can do, no, right, so you can't, but a supper club, we allow those in grant, we just passed its ordinance to allow those different places. Or some kind of commercial animal farm, you know, breeding or raising animals, because that does create a nuisance in neighborhoods, and people would probably think about that. No, that's a suggestion. Otherwise, I think this is a great development, I think as it is. The only other thing was the tree screening. I think it's been brought up that the trees might be better suited to be put on your property rather than the neighbor's property, however, I think they'd screen better, I think Jennifer has pointed out, if they were closer to those properties. I think that's true. However, logistically, trying to replace trees as they die, or if people just decide they want to remove it because they want to put a deck there, and now they want another tree, if you want to deal with that, that's fine, getting access to that. But if you, I think for me, it would make more sense for us, because what they'll do then again is they'll call the city and say, "You guys aren't putting trees back," and then, you know, try to drag us into it. So for a cleaner kind of a deal, I think I would recommend you do that. But other than that, I think it's a great development. I think I welcome it, and I think it'll be great for grant and bring some more people in, so, thank you.
Jenny, did you have something to say to add?
I'd like it. I don't need to add anything.
Couple of things here, I'm just going to make a couple of comments, and then I'm going to ask the engineer to also comment on this. He's got his report in here, and Brad might want to say a couple of things, and then I think maybe we ought to ask the applicant up or the applicant's representative, I do have some questions on some of the things in here I'd like to ask you directly. I think that's excellent advice that Tom just gave you, and certainly when I look at the size and the dollar amount of the homestead you're going to be marketing here, the people that are going to be on these homesteads certainly have the ability to, shall we say, protect themselves, protect their rights. And I'm sure that as high-end developers, you all know that preserving these larger lots up here is going to make your job in terms of the marketing of these lots probably a lot easier, because these people are going to be doing the due diligence. They will know what's going to be there, and you're going to be asked that question. So I'm sure you've thought of that. And it might be, it might be a good thing to, as Tom says, maybe put something in the development agreement that puts their mind at ease and helps everyone out there. But I will reiterate what Tom has said, this is a good development for grant because we are anchoring a large portion of grant, as much as we can, keeping it as open as we can, and I'll talk dollars and cents for a second. We can use the money for our roads, this is a good way to add a little bit more into our coffers on a sustainable basis, so I'm looking forward to this type of development. This is the type of development I would like to see, you know, when I see these on my desk and see these come across in my packet, this is what I'm looking for. Okay. Gentlemen, Larry?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this contingent upon the city reviewing the open meeting violation that took place during the Planning Commission.
Do we have a second on that? Can I get a second?
That would be open and transparent.
Great, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor of Larry's interesting motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and all those who disagree with Larry's interesting motion at this time, please say no.
No.
No, okay, let's move forward. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Carr?
Could we have the developer step up to that?
I'm going to ask if you would for a moment.
Oh, okay, you want to wait? Okay. Brad, do you have anything to add? I went through your engineering report, and I just want to know if there's anything that, new information that's come up. Before we start asking questions, you may be able to answer them before we even start.
Yeah, no, I think they've addressed all the comments that I had in my memo. I know they're still working through the Browns Water Creek Watershed District permitting process, so we're still working through that, but otherwise, I agree, I think they've done a great job of putting together a really good set of plans, so.
Yeah, and I would agree, these plans are professional, I can tell what's going on. Just real quickly before they do come up, an opinion on some of these traffic studies that Jennifer touched on some of these things, and it seems as though Washington County is sort of evolving to different positions on this, and I'm wondering where both professionals think we're going to end up coming to on this, because we all know we've had issues on Lake Elmo before heading north up, I mean, that's a big hill. It's a big hill, and you've got these cars coming down this hill, and then we're going to have them coming into the right, and we're going to have them turning a left across that traffic. So if I could get a sense of where we're going to be going with that, because I don't want to question the applicants on that.
Well, Mayor, members of the council, I really think it's in the hands of Washington County, unfortunately. We have taken a look at these access points and feel it might be excessive to put in the left-turn lanes and the right-turn lanes, but really that decision is going to be left up to the Washington County through their permitting process, and I guess I don't know if Jennifer has anything more to add, but.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I actually attended the meeting, excuse me, last week with the applicant, the Washington County staff asked me to attend just to give a little bit of background in terms of our process and where we were at. From that discussion, I would say there was quite a bit of back and forth with respect to making sure that both locations were safe, that's their number-one priority, obviously. Part of that, that safety check, if you will, is based on the ADT or the trips that are currently on the existing system, not just what's being added to the system. So there's a good dialogue back and forth between the developer and Washington County with respect to, well, how much is really going to be added to the system, and at what time would the threshold be met that such improvements might be warranted? And that discussion is how we got to a place of them having a little bit more discussion about, is it really warranted to have both lefts and rights at both access locations? If the primary access is going to be off of Lake Elmo Avenue, for example, is there a way to, you know, get traffic, if you will, going out that location and have that be your primary place of improvements, as opposed to CASA 12, vice versa? So, I mean, there was a good dialogue back and forth of when, when would it meet those thresholds, and then what improvements are warranted? So the county was going to go back, put their pen to paper, try to figure out what really was necessary based on what this project was and having a better understanding of the layout, and understanding that those two front parcels would be held into perpetuity in those large acreages. That was also a big.
That wasn't, that also wasn't understanding based upon the traffic study that they would be held that size in perpetuity?
Correct, and the county was questioning whether or not that was in fact the case. They weren't 100% sure of it when they were making their recommendations. So there's a good dialogue back and forth, and I think that they understand the project more clearly now, and so hopefully the meeting that the developers have with the county again this week will be successful, and they'll figure out the right solution.
Okay, so, my comment that frankly the situation in terms of the traffic management and the changes made is evolving. Is it the county's normal process or normal way to handle this? Gentlemen, can you let us do this for a second? Is it the county's normal process to, when you have a three-phase process like this, or three-phase development, to have all of the proposed changes up front, or do they sometimes wait till the Phase 2 comes in and then go back to the developers and say, "Hey, you know, that turn lane we talked about, you're going to need it now because now you're moving into Phase 2." So can you describe that? I don't know how their, sort of their minds work on that in terms of the county.
Typically, from a plat review process, they look at the full project, they don't look at it in phases. Unless you come in with a preliminary plat, that then you're only going to preliminary and final the same number of lots. So in a phased project, generally speaking, they look at the overall impact to the system based on the overall project, not a portion of it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carr.
Quick question.
Oh, you're next, sir. Mr. Carr, you're first.
I already called on me.
Hang on a second, Lauren, you're next, you're next.
In discussion with the county and what you said about the perpetuity to keep those lots the same, okay, if there are two residential lots, one of them already has a house up on 75th, the other one, I assume, would be off of 75th, so if they built a house on another property, no?
The new, the second, and I can go back, actually. Let's see here. Yeah, you can see it right here. This is the other larger parcel that doesn't have it, and you'll see here that that lot would be accessed off the new road, not off.
Oh, you drew the house on there, okay. They show it there, but they could access it off of the, off of 75th?
I would be very, I don't think the county would allow a driveway permit off.
Well, that's fine then, but again, that's fine, that's one question answered. The other, the other question I have, is it, is it their thought that those lots would be residential lots in perpetuity also?
For purposes of the study, yes. The analysis was conducted based on residential lots. So when, just as background for those of you who are looking at the study, you'll see in the projected traffic counts that they used basically a multiplier. There's a manual that's called the ITE manual that essentially says that, based on the use, how many trips are being generated based on that use. So this was residential, which is approximately nine and a half to 10 trips per day out of a lot, essentially. So when you look at the numbers in terms of when they were showing the projected change to the system, that's what it's based on.
Okay, so that goes to the question then, because, I mean, obviously if these lots are not attached to the HOA or are subject to, you know, conditional use permits for a greenhouse, a supper club, or anything else, that traffic's going to be slightly skewed. So that's the only thing I'm just bringing up. I don't know what I mean by that, other than these lots eventually could come into play. So from the city grants standpoint, if we got a CUP application at some point on these, would, does this, what the study says now, does that have any weight with what happens with the CUP?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it would insofar as it would be a change of use, essentially, not a change of zoning or land use, but it would be a change of intensity being generated out of the project. So from that respect, then there may be a new traffic study that was warranted based on the new use to determine whether or not it was safe, and if it, let's just hypothetically say the county says on 12, you don't need a dedicated left. I don't know if that's what they're going to, but let's just say for a moment that they do. And then this becomes supper club central, and there's two supper clubs that want to go on these lots, right? At that time, if the two supper clubs were proposed on these lots, a full study would need to be done to determine, A, well, first of all, they would likely have to access the new street, Street A, but then there would have to be a study to determine if where Street A connects to 12, there would be additional improvements that would be warranted based on the intensity of the use.
Right, I just, I guess my point of all of that was only to say to the county, to make sure it's been said that, you know, these lots can be developed. So if there's anything they could do now rather than later to make it either, I mean, that would be the time to do it. That's all, that's my only point, so.
Lauren?
Okay, I was just going to ask, on any of these, do they, does that shows the Washington County right-of-way in the turn lanes or anything on these current schematics that we have?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you look at the preliminary plat and you look at the graphics, the amount of right-of-way that is dedicated on, or shown as dedicated on the plat corresponds to a maximum build-out situation by the county. So the county assumed that the right-of-way that they were requesting could accommodate the dedicated left and could accommodate the dedicated right. So the drawings and the improvements are not submitted, but that's not unusual. What's required on the planning piece or the plating process is to ensure that there's adequate right-of-way that could accommodate what improvements they're contemplating.
The actual right-of-way, gentlemen, if you read the application very closely and some of the accompanying documents, actually, that right-of-ways, they pretty much take it apart in terms of how much right-of-way they're looking for, the 75 feet, I mean, it's quite descriptive in here if you read that, that can answer a lot of those questions on that right-of-way, I'm sure.
I just wasn't pictorial of it.
Yeah, now, you know, they, all they have on there, frankly, Lauren, that I was able to see is just sort of some quick drawings from SPAC and then it looks like the county, yeah, so not on here.
They're not providing the site plans that were given, they're not.
Can't be yet.
On the drawings.
Can't be yet, can't be yet because the county's not ready.
Right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I could also point you to Sheet 4 of 23 in your packets this evening. You can see on that sheet along 12 and then also Lake Elmo Avenue, and you can see the right-of-way that's being requested from the county.
Jennifer, can you orient us just a little bit in terms of what Sheet 4 is? Is there a title on top of it, or is there, or you're talking about the actual plat, the drawings, sir?
The drawings, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sheet 4 of 23, it's labeled preliminary plat, you can see the right-of-way dedication on both roadways on that.
Okay, great. Let's take a look at that real quick. Huh, it's big, yeah, that's a big right-of-way. All right, real good. Any other questions for the staff here, guys, before we move to have the applicant come up and answer some more specific stuff for us? Anything else? Okay, I'm not sure which gentleman is going to represent the development group, but if you want to step up to the microphone, please identify yourselves for us.
David Washburn, grant resident for 26 years.
Mr. Washburn.
Bob Eppert with Streetcar Holdings.
Okay, good to see you, Bob, and Mr. Washburn, fantastic. Do we have questions for these gentlemen? Mr. Carr, you start out. Okay, I had, I addressed, we, Bob, we had talked, and then we had, we talked a little bit about what we might talk about here, you know, I mean, just, but I was just curious, thoughts, questions on that. I mean, the trees, you know, it's your problem.
I'll address the, because I've been neighbors with.
Sure.
Michelle and Joel Lemansky for, since 96 on that property, and we've had two conversations about it. We located it in both locations on their property because they're actually more effective there. However, we said in the Planning Commission, we're not wed to that, we just think they're more effective there, but we'll put them on our side as well. In the case of the Lemanskys, we're still discussing, discussing that, and I don't know if you or Michelle are here or not, but they have also are discussing selling me their property. And so everything's cordial there, we're going to work it out, make it work, and they don't have a overall issue, they do the same thing with the property, they appreciate that, you know, if, if my masterman farm, which is 440s, were developed without being in conjunction with the neighboring property, it's a cul-de-sac and lots, and there'd be houses right next to them, and there's no farmland left, and, you know, there's a, you know, so I've been out here 26 years, and I've farmed, I'm full-time for 10, and part-time for 17 years, and, you know, the farmland is good. I sat on the Planning Commission for nine years, I went through ordinance redrafting and comprehensive plan redrafting. That's why, as Jennifer pointed out, our goals were to, I knew we wouldn't get anywhere if we were looking for a bunch of variances, and, and, you know, we tried to do, you know, as you said, a clean development, and, and I think, you know, to address your, I guess, a request about, you know, eliminating uses, we're, we're aware of the situation, we've got to market expensive lots, and depending what the county does to us, they might actually kill the project, but, you know, we're, we're aware of that, and we just need to be very careful. For example, supper club, you know, I mean, that's not of an interest. But when it comes to agricultural stuff, we just need to be careful, almost anything that's extraordinary in the agricultural sphere requires a CUP, and that's brutal because there aren't any standards for it, so it's licensed to be arbitrary and capricious, and, you know, it's, the power's really in the council's hands, we're very limited, I know I sat up there. And so, you know, having said that, I mean, we take your suggestions and advisement, you know, you're in real estate, you know, that you've got to be careful, there will be concerns, and, 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 you know, we're planting buffers, we're actually on the agricultural land extending, we're planning to basically plant prairie in most of the development, and it's coming into the agricultural land, so it won't even be used for agriculture, and that's even necessary for us to, for the Browns Creek Watershed District. So there's buffers, and, and we're, the residences are pulled away from the farms, so their backyards are big, I mean, you know, we're doing the stuff that, I've been a farmer for 27 years, you know, that makes us good neighbors and minimizes conflicts, you know, that's.
Other questions, Tom?
Yeah, the general thought on restricting any sort of use with these two large agricultural pieces are under consideration with us, we appreciate you bringing that up to us, as well as, do we plant the trees on the adjoining properties, or do we plant the trees on our properties? Again, we just want to.
Right, well, neither one of those are fine with me, I just, I just, from a, from a, if it was me standpoint, I see it as more of a headache, but it's yours, not mine. As far as the uses, yeah, I mean, it's just a suggestion, I certainly, there's many uses on the table, I mean, there's church, I mean, there's lots of things you can put, I'm not thinking, I mean, I don't think a church, if you have these million-dollar homes, I don't think a church is going to make people that upset, maybe some of them, but most of them wouldn't care. But if you started raising cattle, right, or anything like that, you know, that causes things that can.
Cattle beyond, see, I don't want to.
Yeah, exactly.
Beyond our grazable acres.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Animal units, they mean. Animal units, they mean.
But what Bob was talking about with me, I mean, just a little bit here before the meeting, was that the fact that it was something that could be like, you know, commercial, I don't want a few cows, I mean, I don't care, but you, you know what I'm saying.
Or two acres is an excessive, you know, and to go beyond that would be a CUP.
And keep in, keep in mind, gentlemen, let me interrupt you for a second, this is really advisory.
Yeah.
We're giving you advice here, that, that's all we're doing. You own the land, these things are available for certain things, as developers, again, of high-end homes, you know what you're going to be able to do there and what you're not going to be able to do there, so.
We also have, we have a high level of interest in protecting the, protecting.
You'll need, you'll need to.
Right.
Yeah, and you'll need to. Something else?
Well, the only other thing was if there's some kind of land use, and I'm not into exactly what those, I've seen conservancies where you put them in, you know, somewhere it's only, I don't, again, it's a suggestion. What I like to see is that I don't wanna have, you have a problem, and we're all here trying, we think it's a great development, we're, we're trying to not dissuade or get, you know, we're trying to help you, and, and I think, in my mind, I'm trying to help you, just so that we don't have any issues later, and of course, we do this once a month, but I don't wanna, I would have less problems if I could, so if this was a, some way we could head off problems, that's all I'm thinking. So, yeah, if you guys wanna decide, the development agreement's not gonna be done for a while, is that correct? If you guys decide to put a couple of things, look at the use table, if you put some stuff in there, I think it would help the people buying. If you decide not to, it's your choice. That's just a suggestion, so, but I think it's, again, it's a great project, so.
Thank you.
Just to comment quickly, gentlemen, your plans are extraordinary, very well done.
Thank you.
All right, a couple of questions, gentlemen, and this is probably for the staff as well, I probably should've run this by you first, but we'll ask these gentlemen once I, since I have them up here. So, we've got Phase 1, 2, and 3, okay? And I would like you to just explain quickly, Mr. Eppert, if, it's Eppert, correct?
Eppert, yeah.
Eppert, Mr. Eppert, if you would, quickly, just explain the timing of, you know, 1, 2, and 3 is a little fuzzy in my mind here, maybe you could explain that a little bit. And then also, I would like you to talk about, when will this entire road go in, assuming, assuming everything goes well with Washington County, everything goes well here.
Correct.
And when will the entire road go in, and, I'm gonna ask you a three-parter here, you've been asked to identify a prime entry for construction vehicles, and can you talk to me about that a little bit as well?
So, a three-part question, and Dave, please chime, chime in at will. The general thought was to get through the approval process and start, start the land development effort this fall. So, August, September, start the land development effort, at which point we would make a decision whether or not to put the entire road in upfront, or to phase the road as well. The, the general thought process is that we would put the road in upfront because, from an economic standpoint, that would make the most sense. For road contractors, this project is appealing to them largely because it's kind of an infill piece, it's, it's big enough to get their attention, but small enough to where they can jump in and, and get through it in fairly short order. So, for them to come in and do a, a Phase 1 with a temporary cul-de-sac, and then a Phase 2 with a temporary cul-de-sac, and then a Phase 3, finally punching it all the way through to the north, that would not be very economical from, from, from that perspective. There would be three mobilization fees instead of one, I mean, so for a bunch of different reasons, it's gonna make sense to put that road in upfront. So, we're leaning in that direction, we haven't made a final decision yet, but.
Okay.
That was question number one.
Yes.
And maybe two, even.
You hit both of them.
What was the third one? Sorry.
Third one is, I was looking for some timing on this, I was also asking you to tell us what you're thinking in terms of identifying the, the primary entrance into the property, because you're telling me that the road's gonna be done probably the most economical is to punch it all the way through from, from 17 all the way up to 12.
Correct.
So, if you do that right at the beginning of the development, where are these construction trucks coming in?
There will certainly be a, a, a plan for that, we have not developed it yet, it will be part of the developer's agreement.
Okay, real good. One other thing, I know that Tom here has asked you guys to sort of hold those larger lots up, and, and it's gonna be who you to do that, because you're selling very expensive properties here, so obviously, you're gonna do something to address that in some way, it would be a smart move on your part, and looking at these plans, you obviously have your, your act together well. I, once about a time, used to do a lot of snowmobiling, so I'm gonna ask you a question. He knows it's coming, he knows it's coming. Is there any way to keep that snowmobile access through that property?
Until we fill the lots, I, I don't see why not, I mean, it would make sense to me, and then maybe after we fill the lots, you could deal directly with the landowners to get access through their property.
Deal, deal with the HOA, just maybe go down that side there.
Possibly, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, the snowmobilers in, in this room probably understand that that's sort of a main thoroughfare to go down that way, to get to 36, and then access a lot of larger trails down south, so losing this is kinda.
Would you like to keep that as a park in perpetuity?
Yeah, exactly.
You're saying no.
I live in your park.
We try.
It's a very long, thin park, that's all we're asking for here.
So, okay, gentlemen, I thought I'd bring that up, because I did hear from a couple of snowmobilers in the last couple of days, I wanted to.
I think as, as long as we are in control of the association, they will get due consideration.
Yeah, okay, well, good, at least they can come and ask. Larry?
Yeah, I'm impressed that you give the opinion on, on your road, is that you have forethought, mobilization, the economics of doing it at one time. Right now, our, our, our costs for building roads are low, as low as they've been, they've been very competitive the last two years, price of oil and everything, so to move forward, do it all at one time, it's impressive. I wonder if one of you two gentlemen would consider sitting on a road committee so we can get the rest of our road grant fixed.
I would, I would point out that the church I goes to, the church I go to, has twice the budget of this entire city. Not our road budget, not the road budget, our entire budget. My church's budget is double that. So, we exist on a shoestring, you said, I've heard before, you know exactly what I'm talking about, and we do that at the direction of our residents, at least the residents I hear from. So, any other questions for these gentlemen? Mr. Sandstrom, do you have anything to add to this? Does this all look good to you? Any comments to make here?
Nothing further from you, Mr. Mayor, I reviewed the materials, they looked like they're in order.
Very good, and Mr. Carr?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, you're first.
Were you gonna turn to Jennifer and ask?
I was, but.
Go ahead, no, I, I draw my hand.
I'm looking for final comments on this, I wanna, I wanna wrap it all up together, if you have final comments, concerns, things we should be talking about, let's hear it now, or forever hold your peace, I guess, is where I am in this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have nothing further.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for preliminary plat for the farms of Grant.
Second.
Excellent. Did I form the correct sentence? Thank you.
Is that okay? Okay, all those in favor of approving this, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and any one opposed? No, we have five ayes. Excellent.
Congratulations, guys.
Good-looking stuff. All right, we're gonna keep moving forward here, we've got the city attorney up next, Kevin Sandstrom, and he is going to discuss the consideration of a moratorium for, to, in order to do some ordinance development, because we don't have an ordinance in this particular area. Mr. Sandstrom, I'm gonna turn it over to you for an explanation here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, there is a.
Can we just take a break, we have people entering and, and leaving the building, just one moment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there is a memo included in your packet, briefly the background on this issue, the, the city clerk has been approached by an interested person, an interested party in potentially developing a solar farm or a solar development in the city of Grant, and looking at some potential properties that might work for that sort of development, and in reviewing the city's code, we note that there are no particular regulations in our existing zoning code for that sort of operation. In essence, to describe for members of the public who aren't perhaps familiar with this, it's basically a developer who takes a, a large parcel of land, generally open field, and builds a series of solar panels onto that property, along with a, a power collection facility to funnel the electricity that's coming out of those solar panels, and then transports that to generally the power company to sell the electricity that's formulated by those solar panels to the electrical power grid as kind of a commercial operation. And so, the consideration before the council tonight is, in light of the fact that the city is getting some inquiries on these issues, and, and the fact that there's no regulations in place, we're suggesting, staff is suggesting the possible enactment, enactment of what we call a moratorium ordinance on this issue, which is basically a temporary ordinance that just says, no development of this sort will be allowed until we are given an opportunity through our planning commission and our city council to investigate the issue, formulate some city code that makes sense for these issues, enact that code, and then the moratorium is lifted, and people can come in and apply for that sort of development pursuant to the newly enacted code. In addition, I understand the clerk may have been also contacted by the potential developer of this sort of project to discuss the possibility of what we term a text amendment to the, to the city code, which would be potentially promulgated by that developer, promoted by them, and also the, the process of developing it would be funded by them in terms of the cost of doing that, for consultant time to review and investigate the issue, and, with the hopes that that would speed along the process, make it quicker, and defray the cost to the city. So, those are, I think, the two different options that staff is looking at, whether you're interested in engaging in a, a text amendment as promoted by the developer and/or enactment of a moratorium ordinance, in which case we would draft that particular ordinance for a moratorium and bring it back to the council at the next council meeting.
Okay, well, let me, let me be very clear here, because I'm, I'm a little confused, and someone else might be as well. There is no text amendment application currently on file with the city, is that correct?
That's correct, it's just been a, a discussion.
Okay, very good, so. This moratorium, just to explain it, it is for myself as much as anyone, we've done this several times before, when there are new types of development in the city, and we don't have the code to cover it. So, instead of saying, well, sure, do whatever you want, when we don't have any rules for a specific use, we say to the applicant, we say to, to, to people in general, we're gonna place a moratorium on this type of development, until we can develop some rules and guidelines and standards, so that we know that we're doing it right, and that we're reflecting the citizens' views on these types of things. So, this moratorium, as Kevin was careful to say, and I was glad he did, is a very temporary thing, while the process winds through our planning commission first, we get that citizen involvement, and then it comes up to this table, and we do the changes to it and recommend it be adopted or not be adopted. So, that moratorium is really just sort of a, a breathing space, if you will, for us to put something on the books that makes sense to protect the citizens' grant according to their wishes.
And, Mr. Mayor, just to point out in specific, as I noted in the memo that I provided to the council, in general, the moratorium, the statute that allows for enactment of a, a moratorium ordinance allow, generally states that a moratorium should last up to one year, and if at the end of that one-year period, the city is not come to a final determination on that ordinance, you can, you can extend it out beyond that year, but generally, the thought is, these things should last for no more than a year.
We've been pretty good before, getting it done in here. Mr. Carr?
Kevin, so is this, is there a required, as cell phone towers are, to be allowed?
You know, I've not researched that enough to know if, if there's an absolute allowance for it, there certainly is a lot of protection in, in the laws for these sort of developments in general, because I think there's a desire on the part of the legislature to kind of promote these developments, and so, there, you can see references in some of the statutes to variances being granted for these things, and/or, for example, provisions being put in statute where, when a development of this sort is put in place, then surrounding properties are prevented from building up something that would block the sunlight, that is gonna affect the operation of these facilities, and so, I think there is some legislative history that promotes these being done, but I'm not aware of an absolute requirement that they be allowed.
And according to ordinance, we do not have this in there, obviously, 'cause back in 1982, it wasn't around, so generally, in ordinance, and I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or, or planner can, but if it's not in there, that means no, you can't do it.
In general, that's true.
In general, that's true, okay. But because it's not in there, then an argument could be made to do it, okay? So, the fact that we would even do a moratorium on this to study it, doesn't mean that we're gonna have, come back with a, how do you put a solar farming grant, it just means that we could go to the planning commission, and the planning commission could say that it doesn't belong in grant, and we just put the definition in, what it is, and put no down for all the different zones, correct?
That is certainly a possibility, yes.
Okay, and then we'll come back to the council, we can approve it. So, all this would do is then put the definition in, and also the use in the table that we currently have, even if it's no. And so, I think that's where we're going, I just don't wanna make Jeff was, I just wanna be clear, just because we're talking about it, doesn't mean we're looking to do it.
That's right.
There's a big difference in that. But it's something that if we want to get ahead of, then we should have something in the ordinance, so I believe that's correct, so. Larry?
Yeah, Mr. Sandstrom, I'm, I'm not sure who directed you, it looks like you put a considerable amount of time and a little research, and you seem to be pretty much up on, on this, but were you directed by one of the council members that get in there? Because it seems to me it's kinda like revenue enhancement, trying to draft and put all one of these together, if we don't have a big need, and we don't have a rush of people coming in to put this in here, perhaps it should've been talked a bit about the council, we could've reviewed it, and then we could've asked you to put together a nice document and charges, and ask for more revenue enhancement. My question is, did you take this upon yourself, or was this simply a recommendation by the council?
Well, this is actually a discussion I had with the city clerk, based upon communications that the city clerk received from a potential developer that was interested in looking at this sort of project, and so, the concern was, and, and for that reason, I, I did not complete a draft of an actual ordinance, because I wasn't sure if the council wanted to enact an ordinance or not, but I did prepare a memo to inform the council on the issue in terms of what, what the project, potential project, issue was, and why a moratorium might make sense.
Thank you, Mr. Sandstrom, and for all those watching, here it is, here it is, my, my one-page memo telling me to think about doing this, so it wasn't exactly a, a huge undertaking by the city. Mr. Carr?
Thank, thank you, Kevin, for preparing that memo, so we can have an intelligent discussion on this topic, thank you very much.
Fantastic. I'm gonna, Lauren, do you have something?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask the question, in view of our budgetary constraints, wouldn't it make sense, you know, because we don't have a lot of money to work with, wouldn't it make a little bit of sense to maybe let them pay for it, and do the text amendment, and then we just tweak that? 'Cause it could save us some money, that might be a possibility, something to consider.
Are you, are you addressing that to Mr. Sandstrom?
Well, I was addressing it to you, you know, if you.
Well, I, I thought I was, I was clear, and, and whether or not that text amendment would save us money, I think, you know, that's why I said, is there a text amendment on the table now, and I believe there's an escrow associated with that. So, there's not a text amendment there, but that's, that brings up a, a different question. Mr. Sandstrom, if we were to move this forward, just a recommendation to move it forward to the public hearing, and following up on Lauren's question here, if we did actually end up passing this moratorium, and a couple of days later, one of these applicants came in and said, hey, we, we would like to do that text amendment now, are we precluded from accepting that escrow, or, or pursuing that text amendment, as you had stated earlier, once this is passed?
No, I don't, I don't see this as a, a ban to accepting a proposed text amendment from, from a potential applicant.
So, the potential is still open for that text amendment to occur, and for them to handle a lot of those costs?
Sure.
Yeah, good question, Lauren. All right, fantastic. Mr. Carr?
So, are we looking, I mean, we don't have a resolution to do this, as Kevin said, he didn't draft anything, or, so do we, are we just looking for a motion to bring this forward to the planning commission?
Let's go ahead and ask our clerk here, how do you wanna handle it, Kim?
It's a motion to move forward with the moratorium at the June meeting.
Also moved.
Also moved, I'll circuit that. A second, all those in favor of moving this forward for a continued study, is that okay, Kim, the way I stated that? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, we've got four ayes, I'm also an aye on that, I think it's good to move this forward and take a look at it, we have one no. Thank you very much. Moving forward, right into new business, we've got a new contract here, the consideration of the city assessor, his contract extension. For those of you not here earlier, we did have our review board meeting today, before the seven o'clock meeting, and that's where folks can come in and talk to us about the valuation on their real property within the city of Grant. That was a great success, I thought it went very well, we had a number of people here tonight, so I thought that went well. Kim, do you, do you wanna take this? Do you want me to talk about this, or just?
I'll go ahead, mayor and council members, it's the same exact contract that was in place for the last several years, this extends the contract one year with the same exact price, no price increase.
There is no price increase at all, and Mr. Smith, I see is maintaining insurance And Mr. Smith, I see, is maintaining insurance in the amount of $1 million. And we also have the exact same clause in this contract that it can be terminated with 30 days written notice between the parties. So seems to be a good piece of work. I know I've been happy with Mr. Smith in the past and I would entertain a motion to go ahead and accept this.
Motion to approve Mr. Smith's contract.
Second.
I have a second. Let's discuss this a little bit. Mr. Lanu, I don't understand why you're not asking any questions on this contract versus the KEG contract.
Because I don't believe this contract is in excess of $100,000.
And Mr. Sansstrom, I just want to explore that just very quickly, as long as we have this on the floor. It was my understanding that contracts in excess of $100,000 for services were not required to go out to bid, only capital improvements or capital equipment. Is that correct?
I believe both capital improvements or potentially services as well can be within that bidding requirement. But as I stated before, the prior contract that we talked about was really an extension of an existing contract on the exact same terms as have existed previously.
Okay, hence, even if the requirement did exist, it would not exist in that case as it was an existing contract. Okay, I have a motion and a second.
At that point, I'd like clarification from our attorney. Just because it was issued and it should have had a request for proposal and it was issued, doesn't mean that you extend the contract and you keep violating the statute as you go forward because you violated it before.
Yeah, we've, I'm going to stop you right there. We've gone over this before multiple times. Mr. Sansstrom has been taking over the city here for a bit from Nick Vivian. Nick has addressed this, Kevin, if you, just a quick phone call. He's addressed this with Larry, I can't imagine the amount of times, 10, 15 different times. And it's been answered 10, 15 different times to Mr. Lanu. And Mr. Lanu, unfortunately, is still playing lawyer at the council table. So I am looking to take a vote here. We've got a first and a second. All those in favor of extending this contract for Mr. Smith, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? We have five ayes. Thank you. Let's move forward. Consideration of Resolution Number 2017-09, Request for Anexation. I brought this forward as I received a phone call from a neighboring mayor, the mayor of Monamidi, about a week and a half, two weeks ago. During this phone call, the mayor of Monamidi told me that he had been approached by two councilmen who had discussed with him the possibility of annexing the school district site on the north side of 75th to Monamidi, as well as the property on the south side of 75th, formerly known as, I believe it was Christine, one of Christine Flug's properties that she held in the city. And at that time, I said, "Well, you know, Mr. Mayor Judd, we're a city for a very, very simple reason. We do not allow annexation. That's why we became a city. In fact, if history serves me correctly, that farm used to be known as the Bruggeman Farm. And some proposals were made to annex that just years, years, years ago, and those were defeated. And that was one of the reasons we actually became a city, were to defeat these annexation motions and movements by other cities that surrounded us as we were at the time of township. We're now a city, so we do not allow that. I expressed my amazement with that. And then the mayor asked to have a gentleman contact me by the name of Mr. Erickson, I believe his name is. Very nice gentleman, and he sent me over a proposal, also telling me, Mr. Todd Erickson, also telling me that Mr. Lanu and Mr. Sederstrom had discussed this proposal with him, to what extent I'm not sure. And I, you know, we had a civil conversation. He's a very nice man. They are in the process of, I'm not sure if they're under contract right now or whether or not they're going to be under contract to purchase that property from its current owner. And he had sent over a plan to me stating that if they were able to annex that into Monamidi, they could build high-density housing, they could build some commercial stuff there, they could do some nice things there. However, Grant's philosophy has always been to maintain these open spaces. It's been to maintain these sightlines. It's been to hopefully develop with the size lots that we just saw, this excellent presentation by Farms of Grant provide us, because that nails down large areas of Grant. I know better, no better way to say it and holds the specialness of Grant where each of us has a park for our backyard. And to allow annexation would irrevocably change that. So I guess I'm going to ask Larry and Lauren first, why would you approach the mayor of Monamidi and propose annexation of pieces of Grant?
All right, Mr. Mayor, now that you've asked me, I'd like you to give me the time to finish my explanation before you interrupt me.
I'll give you two minutes.
No, I have the floor.
Yep, two minutes.
So, okay, I've got a document in 2002. Mayor Tom Carr and Mark Wallach, Monamidi Public School Superintendent, applied to take the Beller sanitation out of the Superfund program and put it into a VIC program. So we do have a Superfund and an environmental impact, and Monamidi would accept that property into their system. On April 19, 2011, we had an illegal city council meeting to approve the school conditional use permit. I have the documentation right here, signed by our city clerk, that that was an illegal meeting, had no written request. And that was at 5:00. I have the minutes from the Monamidi City Council that on April 19, you ran over to the city of Monamidi and entered into a joint powers agreement to bring in Met Council Sewer and Water.
Who is you ran, ran to Monamidi? Can you identify the perpetrators, please?
Okay, Mayor Judd Marshall convened, let's see, let's, approval of joint powers agreement for public utility service provided by the city of Monamidi located in the city of Grant. So the city of Grant and Monamidi entered in joint powers agreement to bring in Met Council Sewer and Water.
Why would the Met Council have anything to do with that sewer and water? That was a joint powers agreement between Monamidi and Grant, and in fact, the high school was, whoa, wait, 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 I have the floor. I have the floor for a second. Hang on, let me answer that. Let me answer that. Let me answer that. The high school was built in, what, 1972? There's been sewer and water extended from Monamidi since then. What does the Met Council have to do with that agreement?
Okay, I'll, if you sit there.
If you'd answer that. I just want to throw that in.
And that's why I've asked you to sit down and maybe you'd have the answer right here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, resolution, and this was passed in July 2011, resolution approving a comprehensive plan amendment associated with the extension of public utilities to the Monamidi Elementary School in the city of Grant as proposed by AJA, on behalf of the Independent School District, authorizing the distribution of the plan amendments to affect jurisdiction and the Met Council to review and comment. So you entered into a joint powers agreement, which caused Met Council to amend its comprehensive plan to accept the sewer and water in Grant. This proposal that's brought forth today will take all public sewer and water out of the city of Grant. We have it in there now. We have Met Council in our city. This that they proposed will do that. This proposal that's put in front of us will take all the Monamidi schools into the city of Monamidi, who provides the sewer, the water, and the fire protection. We cannot provide those. If we persist on fighting this detachment, we simply, in Monamidi moves forward, it is not done because the city of Grant opposes it. What happens? It goes to the Office of Administrative Hearings, which will determine that. We will spend a lot of money in litigation. Already, it appears that our mayor probably is the one that wrote the resolution opposing annexation that they want to vote on tonight, given the expert lammers, the authority to fight this annexation. But we know if it goes to the Office of Administrative Hearings, and they're going to look at the two cities, one wants it and one opposes it, so it is going to get settled at the Office of Administrative Hearing. We can fight the cost in litigation because if it goes there, you know what's going to happen? The Office of Administrative Hearing says to the city of Grant, "Can you provide that hockey arena, which by the way is being proposed to be put on 30 feet of garbage?" If you want to fight that argument, they're going to say, "You can't provide them sewer water or fire protection." This proposal puts the hockey arena on the other side of the road. It takes it off the mixed municipal dump, which is not allowed because it has a covenant that prohibits it. This proposal provides 20 acres of park into the city of Grant. They're only asking, they're taking 139 acres of Monamidi School District property into the city of Monamidi. They're only asking for 80 acres, not one-for-one. They've been very fair about this, so that they can provide a hockey arena on a safe piece of property. This is a win-win for both cities. And if we fight the annexation, we will lose in court because once they go in front of a court and they say, "These people are trying to put a, provide 10 acres and donate it for a hockey association," which we're all in favor of. I understand the passion of these kids that want to go out and play hockey out here. I actually do. I am opposed to one sitting on top of a mixed municipal dump through 30 feet of garbage. To this date, they have not passed the environmental study from the EAW, and it will never get passed because there is a perpetual covenant prohibiting. So these gentlemen that have proposed it are actually serving the citizens a greater good. They're providing a piece of land to put a hockey arena on. They're not asking for one-for-one. They've been very mindful of that. They're not trying to annex a big, the whole 160 acres which they own. They're donating 20 acres of it to a park of the city of Grant, which we don't have and which, when we amend our comprehensive plan, is, has to be addressed. That's part of why we are to be amending our comprehensive plan soon, is to address parks. Maybe the only other park we have is down by Man Lake where our dry hydrant is.
Are you getting close?
Yeah, I'm getting real close. This proposal that they have, if opposed and gone to court, we will lose. It is a proposal that provides a hockey arena. It removes all the suspicion of putting a facility on top of a dump site. It removes any, if they give the land to the Rink II, it is no longer the school's property that we're setting. Right now, the Rink II is proposing putting a hockey arena on top of school property. The school will always own it. And if they default as taxpayers, we will be put on the hook, read the lease agreement. This way, if it is given and they are given land and it's not associated to a public entity, if it fails, it goes back to whoever puts this facility up. The taxpayers are not on the hook for this. They're not asking for 160 acres and if even a larger piece of. If we fight this annexation and we go to the Office of Administrative Hearings, I guarantee you, for the most part, I don't trust the court systems all that well, that being said, we cannot provide the hockey arena, public sewer and water. We cannot.
Now you're circling around. You already hit this point. So I'm going to ask you to finish up.
Okay, I'll finish it up. There's no way Rink II can put a hockey arena on the proposed site because they will have to go through contaminated soil.
Okay, you've already stated that, so let's wrap it up.
No, I didn't talk about this. Sewer and water services. Look at the environmental assessment. It hasn't passed, and neither has, four months ago, we approved a site plan for the parking lot improvement for the Monamidi School District. Guess what? It hasn't passed to date because they are concerned. MPCA cannot approve that. So right now, these people are providing a safe place for our citizens and fit the plan.
Exactly.
And I applaud them for that, and I'd like to make a motion that we accept that. In fact, maybe it's time Mr. Cop speaks up on his time and other than his giving a second hand.
Just go ahead and do your motion there.
Now, this time, I make a motion that we do not make a determination on this tonight, that we open this up for a public hearing, let the citizens of Grant come in here and speak. And looking at this board, five members sitting up here all belong in the Monamidi School District. We have no representative in the Stillwater.
Is this part of the motion or?
Yeah, I make a motion that we have a public hearing before we make any determination tonight to pass a resolution opposing annexation.
Great, let's go ahead and call it. Let's go ahead and call it. All those in favor of Larry's convoluted motion, please say aye.
To have a public hearing, aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed to this motion, please say no.
No.
No. Mr. Carr?
Where to start? Well, I'll start by saying, you know, Larry's a history of never letting history or facts get in the way of his talk, so.
I'll provide the documentation.
Let me try to clear some of this up. My second year as mayor, I sat down with Mr. Bruggeman and some other people and they wanted to annex that property into Monamidi. And I said, "Okay, well, you can certainly try, but we're going to vote no because we just became a city, so we can avoid that a few years ago." I heard the same rhetoric that Larry's saying, that we have to fight this annexation. There is no fight for any annexation. There's nothing right now. Monamidi, I just talked to Judd today. They don't want, he's not going to fight us if we don't want to do it. If we're interested in doing something, he's certainly presented to Monamidi and they're, "I'm talking." And there's no guarantee that Monamidi would. Back then, I didn't say a thing. The Monamidi residents and the Monamidi City Council resoundingly say, "No, we don't want to do that at all." So that's the history of it. It's been brought up a couple other times. I'm frankly disappointed that Christine couldn't make a go of the horses because I would have liked to see that. I still miss it when I go by there because I think it's a shame. Economics, I'm not sure what happened, but it is not. I was raised with horses in Grant. I like Grant. I like horses. So, okay. So anyway, it's a shame that didn't happen and so, yeah, we had issues on this, but I wished her well on the project. So I think this is ridiculous. I ran on no annexation. This isn't even the planning commission. It was on all my brochures. I think everybody up here that, well, at least us, I think, Larry, you want annexation, it sounds like. So your guy, you should run on that.
I want a public hearing.
If you choose to run again, you should put that on your flyers.
You do not have the floor.
And I think, so I don't need to send this anywhere. It's not up to the, it's not up to the planning commission. I'm not passing the buck. No annexation. That's why we became a city in '96. Delwood annexed some property from the north end of Grant. They said, "We're going to become a city." We're the only city that's ever got approved to be a city to develop less, not to develop more. And they approved us. It's never happened after that. So I'm, in that tradition, I'm not willing to change that. I also don't want to set a precedent anywhere in Grant for annexation because you start one spot, you cannot say no to anybody else. You can't be arbitrary and capricious. You can talk to the attorneys about that, they'll tell you the same thing. To the developer, I don't know if he's here, we welcome a development there. We, just like the last development that happened, we welcome 16 more really nice lots, beautiful lots with more kids from Monamidi Schools, which supports the school system, which gets us closer to 5,000 people in Grant, which gets us some gas tax money, which we do not get now. It also locks up that corner there, so hopefully we'll stop talking about annexation for the foreseeable future. As far as the letter, and I, again, I'm not knocking the person who wrote this, but calling it a dump site, Larry calling it a Superfund site, I mean, it's tiring. Okay, it was a dump site. I dumped trash there when I was a kid. Okay, it's not anymore. It got cleaned up. That was a good thing, not a bad thing. I'm talking. It's not a bad thing. And that was a good thing for Grant. It all happened. We applied for permits, then funding we did not get, yes, that is true, but because we were trying to help the situation, and now that site has been cleaned up. According to Larry, it's still toxic. I don't think so. That's his opinion. He's entitled to have it, but he's not entitled to have his own facts that there's still something wrong there because it's not true.
Why haven't you got a parking lot?
Would laugh at that. So anyway, I think this is really short and sweet. I don't think the residents that I talk to, and I can talk louder than anybody up here, I bet I can, so I'm just going to keep talking. So, anyway, so anyway, I think it's a nonstarter. I'm not going to do it. I'm not passing the buck to the planning commission. It's ridiculous. So I, you know, and so is there, did we call the motion already on there?
Some things to say before we do any of that.
But at the end of all this, to protect Grant, I'm not sure what Larry's trying to do. Maybe Larry's trying to get some business off of this or something. I'm not sure what his reasons are.
I'm trying to take all Met Council sewer and water out of Grant that you brought into our city, Mayor Carr, and I have the documentation.
And the only other thing is, when I brought it in, I was, I think I was a sophomore. I didn't know flushing the toilets was going to cause such problems because the water was already into Grant by then.
Yes.
So I didn't know. But the other thing is the hockey rink. I support the hockey rink, but the hockey, the hockey rink needs to go where, well, it has to go where it can go. I'm not a land use expert. I've been schooled by attorneys as far as what we can say no to, what we can't say no to. If it's a school, great. If it's not, if it's possible, put somewhere else, they can try to do that. if it's possible, put somewhere else. They can, they can try to do that. I'm not against the hockey rink. I'm just not against this.
I'm thirty feet ahead.
And for the developer, one last thing, and I've mentioned this before, I'm gonna strongly say this. If you build a development anywhere, they're gonna charge you an arm and a leg for park fees. Zero in Grant. Nothing. We don't, and the reason we don't want this beautiful park that Larry was talking about is, how do you maintain that? It costs money. We'd rather put our money into roads, and everybody lives on a park. We have large lots.
Here, you'd rather put your money in litigation.
So, so we have one park.
It's right over here.
Only when you break the law.
It's, it's the, it's the school, it's the school field. They use it. We, we're proud of our baseball park. And that's really all we need in this, in this town hall. So I'm done. Okay, real good. A couple of comments here. That was, you know, the convoluted reasoning, pulling together all these disassociated parts with no proof that I've come to expect and have to deal with on a monthly basis. And that is sad because real progress could be made moving forward. Instead of cherry picking a fact from over here and then one from over here, and then we'll put those together and we'll make a big campaign issue out of it, which is really what's happening here, is a campaign issue.
And a pig farm.
In terms of, in terms of liability, you know, I keep hearing this liability question over and over and over. The, the land that the school is on over there and where the hockey rink hopefully will go because I do support it, and hopefully that, that can be proven to be a safe and proper site with the proper construction techniques. I, I do support it in that case. That land was actually taken by eminent domain. Okay, the vast majority of that land was taken by eminent domain. I have here in front of me, and in fact, everyone here has the conditions for district, uh, school district 832, for the initial development of that land. Let me read you number 17 just very quickly, and I have, I can provide extra copies of this as well, and the clerk can as well. "Applicant is hereby notified," applicant being the school district, "hereby notified of the existence of a non-operating landfill located just to the east of the half-section line of the 30 acres the applicant has obtained by eminent domain, and further that the town in this case, at that time was a town, in the county of Washington assumes no liability for any claims, suits, costs, losses, and expenses that may in any manner result from or arise out of the construction, maintenance, and use of a public facility constructed there." So Washington County was also, was also-
Within the close proximity of the operating landfill.
I'm still talking, still talking, still talking. Both Washington County, the eminent domain operator, which in this case was the school district, were well aware of this when they went there. They're well aware of it now. And as far as city sewer and water being in Grant, my gosh, that's such a nonstarter. Again, that high school, Tom made a little joke here. I was washing my hands in, in Grant with city water in, what, the 1970s? Probably 1960s for you, but I'm just saying.
No, seventy, that's what I wanted.
Just saying. Um-
I don't like that joke.
He was washing his hands with city water in the 1970s because the high school, the Monamita High School, was in Grant in the 1970s.
Any extended Met Council sewer and water-
And we've always had that. Well, I don't remember the Met, I don't remember any Met Council or anyone else doing any of that. What we did is we made a Joe, a powers agreement because they got that land by eminent domain, and they have a right to develop it, just like the developers that sat here today and the developers that have that, that parcel, I think, under contract on the south there. So there's certainly a right to do what you want with your land as long as it fits within our ordinances. But this, this scaremining, this electioneering up here is, is, is sad. And I'm gonna, Mr. Carr, we're gonna have you talk a little bit here and then I'm gonna call the question.
That's fine. I just have one more comment based on what you said, Mr. Mayor. The, if you think about what happened back when they, when they did this, they annexed the property. The city school board, they have a lot of power. We were a township. Why didn't, why didn't city Monamita take it? Why didn't they take it?
Was it on a dump?
What? No, it wasn't on a dump. It was on the far end. Why didn't they take it? Why didn't the city fathers say, "You know, if you're gonna put water in here, why didn't, why, because we're scared of the Met Council?" 'Cause we are. We're nervous, not scared. But why didn't we say, "Take it then. Just take it. We're not getting tax money for it. Take it. Put your water in, and we can say," as Mr. Lanu says, "no water is in Grant." Why didn't they do that? Because the city fathers, at that time, said, "We don't wanna start letting people take our property, so we would've fought it." But they worked with the school. They put it in. It was only for Monamita. And Monamita said, "Fine." The school said, "Fine." Everybody's agreed to it back in the day. Larry doesn't like that. I, I get it. He somehow thinks now it's a big problem. That issue was settled many years ago. Over thirty, forty years ago. That was settled. The city fathers said so. The Met Council signed off it. Everybody signed off on it. So that's a done issue, despite what Mr. Lanu says.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the question. Mr. Lanu had asked, and Mr. Cedarstrom had gone ahead and supported some sort of a, a public hearing.
Public hearing.
A public hearing. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
Mr. Mayor, council members, that motion failed.
We did vote on that, okay. I wasn't sure. We did, yeah. And that one right behind you too. There's so much going back and forth. I'd like a, a, a motion to consider the resolution 2017 dash zero nine, the resolution opposing the potential concurrent detachment and annexation of real property. And I will remind the audience during this that we just passed one of these. This is not an unusual thing. We passed one of these last September. Somebody tried to take some land and put it into Delwood so they could develop it. It didn't happen because we passed one of these, just like it, last September. I will entertain the motion.
I'll so move.
Open for discussion?
Yep.
Okay, we have a resolution sitting in front of, opposing the detachment of the Monamita School property, taking all public sewer and water out of the city of Grant, which these entered into a joint powers agreement in 2011. They say they didn't bring it in, but they did sign it, and it was at an illegal city council meeting that they approved that condition.
No, it wasn't.
Well, your city clerk did that.
I'm gonna call the vote.
So what, what, what I'm, okay, I'd like to finish up here.
Wrap it up.
At this time, I would still like to ask the city council to allow the citizens of Grant to have a open, public discussion on the issue. We simply, we simply have a dictatorship. So my question is to you, is Mr. Sandstrom, who directed you to draft this resolution?
I didn't draft the resolution.
Who drafted it? It looks like a pretty legal document and all the whereas and everything. Who drafted the resolution? Was it somebody in your firm?
I believe Kim did.
Okay, well, you know what-
Did you draft the resolution?
Absolutely.
Now that you have the origin of the resolution, Larry, that's incredibly important. Let's go ahead and call the question since we have the origin. Those in favor of passing resolution number 2017 dash zero nine, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. And those opposed to resolution number 2017 dash zero nine, opposing the potential concurrent detachment and annexation of real property, please say no.
No.
And I say aye. Passes.
I just like to comment. I'd like to comment on one thing that was, I didn't get a chance to comment on, but the, the issue is that the annex, the annexation was something that I ran on. The residents voted on me because I said no annexation. So the residents have spoken. I just wanna make, make that comment. Thank you.
Many, many times. We don't have any unfinished business.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna note, the resolution does note that it is the potential concurrent detachment and annexation. A petition was not submitted to the city.
I understand that. This is, if I could characterize it, perhaps Mr. Sandstrom will stop me if I'm not characterizing it properly. This is a defensive move on our part to notify those who may be considering it, that we will defend our rights in the annexation realm.
To keep Met Council sewer and water in the city of Grant.
I'm sure that's gonna be a great campaign thing for you in 2018. Kevin, is that correct?
That's right, Mr. Mayor. I mean, there was a, a letter received by the city dated April 21st, 2017, that suggested a potential for annexation and tried to tell the benefits of it.
Okay.
And so it's in response to that, not a formal application.
Okay. Mr. Carr?
I would also just reiterate what I said before. I encourage the developer to come forward, and I would love to see a developer on their properties.
Yes, underneath our, our current ordinances. That's fantastic. There is no unfinished business. We're gonna skip right to eight discussion items. Uh, city council reports, any updates of the council? Mr. Carr?
Uh, Mr. Tuffy had said earlier that burn, burning permits are allowed. I wanna make sure that's on the tape record, so. Come get your burning permits.
Get your burning permits.
And just on another note.
Yep, let's wait. Yep. Just a break here. We have a lot of people leaving after that vote.
Problem. Legs get tired. On another topic, which I forgot to mention with the, the other subdivision with the Carlson Farm and stuff, I, I do miss Bob. Was our old fire marshal. I thought I'd get that in. I was gonna do it before, and I forget. Good guy. Uh, city council reports or updates?
Larry?
I've got an update. Recently, a lot of the citizens got a city newsletter in the mail. It, it contained a lot of fake news. And as a matter of fact, it said, if you read the one document, it said that your school taxes are 35% of your property tax. I challenge any one of you sitting out there, look at your tax statement, see if your school tax over 35%. In Monamita School District, the city taxes are 53%. The Stillwater School District is 43%. So being that our city policy allows councilmen to write articles according to its own city policies, we were not allowed to do that. So the only one allowed to be in charge of the city newsletter is our Mayor Grants, a week, Mayor Tom Carr, or maybe Jeff Huber, whatever. He's the one-
Good attention to detail, Larry.
Great detail here. And, and that's as much detail as you put on there when you said that you're responsible for a 35% tax for our schools. So we have false information put out there. Uh, if you read the other article, it talked about scoop the poop in Grant. We're more concerned, if you read the article in the city newsletter, it talked about getting your dog feces off the sidewalks in Grant so they don't go into the sewer system.
Yeah.
Great newsletter, folks. So-
Fantastic. Thanks so much, Larry, for cutting down an off, an effort by basically volunteers to get that out to our citizens. Yeah, Mr. Mr. Carr, you go ahead.
Can you, can you make sure the next newsletter that you put in there, the, what the people who have, like Larry, who have green acre property, what they're paying to the school system?
Yes.
And taxes. Could you put that chart in there?
Yes. Let's, I want, I want a chart of what green acres is saving landowners that are enjoying that green acres tax benefit, and I'd like that in there. Also, going back to 2017 budget and levy here, I'm not sure if anyone is here who would like to talk about this a little bit. It is my understanding, it is my understanding, only the originator would be allowed to do that. Thank you, sir. The, it is my understanding that because all the levies could not be included in here because we're in two different school systems, it would be too difficult to take all those levies, dump them in, and then try to separate those numbers, and then send, of course, the right newsletter to the Stillwater people and the right newsletter to the Monamita people. That might be a little difficult.
Actually, it would be simple saying that Monamita is 53% and Stillwater 43%. It's really simple, Chuck.
Thank you very much.
You must not pay the taxes at your house.
A second ago, you were an attorney and an environmental consultant. Today, five minutes, now you're an accountant. Okay, so that's what happened there. Lauren, do you have an update for us?
Okay. I was gonna say, you can go to the grantreporter.com, get some more information.
Nope, nope, nope. Enough of that. I know you guys are running. I know you guys are running for office already, but let's try to keep it on the town a little bit.
You haven't got anything to do about running for office. I got a flash for you.
Just a little bit.
I don't think anybody's running for office.
Let's go to staff updates. Staff updates. Here we go. Kim, I'm gonna turn it to you. Too much fun.
Members, I'll jump in front of Brad here for a staff update. The article on the budget in the newsletter was about the city's budget. There was no reference to, or, or meant to portray any school district.
Yeah.
Uh, it was city-only information. And the cute little article on scooping dog waste is, meets the MS4 requirement.
So we're meeting a federal, so we're meeting, so we're meeting a federal requirement on that. Fantastic. Let's go ahead. I'm, I'm done with that. We're moving forward up to staff updates. 2017 special roads projects, you had to, some explanatory stuff there. Kim, I ask you to move forward to I 2017 special roads projects under staff updates.
That would be city engineer.
Oh, well, I'm a, Brad, I'm looking at you.
Mayor, members of the council, just a quick update. City staff will be putting together a, a small list of two or three projects that we'll bring forward to the June meeting and allow you to choose which project we decide to do this year for the special roads project.
Excellent. That's good news. And I will also reiterate that we are waiting for the, frankly, for the, for the legislature to do the job. You know, we have good people up there, but you gotta do that job. You gotta return to us some of that gas tax money so we can maintain these small local roads. We are working just on property taxes. We, we need and deserve some of those funds back.
Just, just a note, Mayor, that the transportation bill did include funding for small cities.
I have talked to our representative several times on that. It's still not quite finalized, or I would have a number here for you tonight. Unfortunately, I do not have that number for you here tonight. I wish I did. Looking forward to seeing those projects. I'm sure that you're gonna be working in conjunction with both KEG and the Klein Brothers, our graders, in order to come up with that list of, of projects.
Yes, we will.
Yeah, excellent. Let's move forward. Brad, you had, I believe chaired, you and our administrative clerk had chaired the Seal Coat Road Project Neighborhood Meeting. Can you describe that to us, how it went?
Sure. No, we had a, a really good meeting with the Seal Coat project area a couple weeks ago. I think there was maybe 30 to 35 people that showed up. And we, what we really did is we went through the process of special assessments, kind of explained to them the process that we went through last year with Keswick Avenue, let, let the folks know that the city had available funding, the, the amount of money that they have in, or the city has in their capital improvement, project funds for this project that they would be willing to put forward or put towards a project if, if one of the residents decided to champion, champion a petition, bring it to the city for a, a road project. So it was a good meeting. We followed up with some email information, a frequently asked question, letter that we sent out, and we'll, we'll probably follow that up with a, the same information through regular mail, just so everybody gets the same information.
Okay. Couple of questions real quick for you.
Yep.
Number one, when is the, pardon me, quickly, when is sort of the drop dead date? Either we have some concerned residents that are putting together a petition, or we have to go through with that, that Seal Coat project. What is that date? Do the people there know that?
So we did give them that information. The, the drop dead date is May 26th.
Okay.
Um, so if we don't receive a petition from any of the residents by May 26th, we'll just move forward with the Seal Coat project or, or maintenance for the, for the roads in that area.
Great. Did you see some interest down there?
Uh, it's always hard to read.
Yeah.
Um, but we, you know, we thought there might be a few people come forward, but we haven't seen anything yet, so we'll just have to wait to see.
Mr. Carr, do you have a question?
Well, I was just, I was just gonna say, if we get interest, are we gonna, or do we need the petition?
Well, I think we still need to follow the, the protocol where we get the petition by, you know, at least 35% of the residents on the street. And then, you know, we would move forward with the feasibility report. If we get more than 75%, then we would-
So if you get a strong phone call, "We're gonna do it," but you don't have a petition, then it's toast?
Right. I, I would think we would need the signatures. That way, you know, we're safe and we've got the 75% of the contingency or the, the residents along that roadway segment, so then we can move forward without trying to determine if we do have that 75%.
No, just so they know if they're watching.
Yeah, it's easier on a petition, so.
Larry?
Brad, I assume by now you're probably going out and, and getting quotes for seal coating, or have received.
You know, we haven't, we haven't gone out for, for quotes yet, Larry. We were gonna wait until after that, May 26th, to see if we did get a petition.
Right. So we're gonna wait too long. Right now, if we wait too long, we know a lot of cities are already, the contractors are already busy. If we wait too long, you'll be pushed out into September, which, and you know, once you get past a certain date, it's more effective to put that seal coating down when it's nice, hot tar, and it seeps in it. Does not do any good to do seal coating in November.
Yeah, I think-
Not as effective. We all know that.
Right.
And our best prices are to get it out there early in the season, when these contractors are competitive bidding. If we wait too long, the competitive edge means they've already got their work lined up for the year. If they can fit you in and they can price you higher because you waited to the end, we're setting up ourselves for failure. The earlier we go, we know we had a, a seal coating project all lined up. We could've been getting our, our prices while they're competitively bidding. Later in the year, we know that these contractors, our prices go up as their calendars get filled up. And if they can hook a good, high-priced one, yeah, they'll come in and take care of it. So let's make sure we get our seal coat bids in early and that we get it applied when it's the most effective.
I just wanna thank Larry for giving our four-year engineering, engineer, good advice for that. You keep, you take that to heart, okay?
Was there, was there any bad advice that was involved, Brad?
No, good advice. It was good advice, and you take that to heart.
It was profound.
It's profound, profound. We're gonna turn to Kevin Sandstrom, our attorney. He is going to follow up on the city's legal process. How do we make these decisions? Gentlemen, please in the audience, if I could keep, talk here, I don't wanna talk over you, gentlemen. I'm gonna ask Kevin Sandstrom to take a look at the city's legal process here. I know that Mr. Cedarstrom had followed, had followed the procedure to get this on the agenda. Thank you very much, Mr. Cedarstrom. Mr. Sandstrom, I'm gonna turn this over to you for a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I did take a look at this memo from Mr. Cedarstrom. And in fact, we had a nice conversation about it at the end of last week. And as I told Mr. Cedarstrom, I intended to put together a written formal memo for him on that issue, on these issues that he's raised.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I was unable to complete it before tonight's meeting, but I, I think I will have that done by the end of this week. And I'll send it to not only Mr. Cedarstrom, but I'll send it to the entire council so all the council can see the input.
Yeah, Mr. Carr? Who, who requested you do that, Ed Mal?
Mr. Cedarstrom did.
Who ordered you to do that? Did he have, I'm, okay, I'll, I'll withdraw my.
I won't. That, that is, that, no, I have a comment. I have a comment. Mr. Sandstrom, that is revenue enhancement. You have to be very careful with that. But, all jokes aside, that is an important thing because all the members of the council, and I appreciate Lauren doing this, all the members of the council need to have a quick and handy reference